Well, good evening and welcome to the ABC 7 Listens meeting here in Cupertino. I'm Kevin Keishen, the news director for ABC 7 News. To my right, Tracy Wacowski, our assistant news director, and our South Bay Bureau nightside reporter, Eric Rosales. We're going to be here for about 90 minutes. We promised to get things wrapped up by nine o'clock. This is an ongoing initiative by ABC 7 News which started almost four years ago. We go to a different community in the Bay Area every month and hold a town hall-style meeting just like this one. We invite community leaders and members of the general public to share the problems, needs, and interests of the community with us. It's a chance for us to come to Cupertino and learn more about your city, about the issues that you're concerned about, and about the things that we can do in terms of our coverage. It's also an opportunity for you to ask us any questions that you might have about the editorial process and how we decide what to cover, when to cover it, that sort of thing. Our feeling is the more transparent we can be with our viewers and with the members of the communities we serve, the more you understand the way we work, the better the relationship will be long-term. I would like to acknowledge Mayor Richard Lowenthal, who is here tonight. Thank you very much for giving us this wonderful facility to work in. As I was telling one of the crew members earlier, this is really the Taj Mahal of ABC 7 Listens meetings. We've never had facilities quite like this, and certainly not a three-camera shoot live on cable and streamed on the Internet. So, very impressive, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you for those kind comments. We appreciate you being here in Cupertino and hope the night goes well. Well, it may be a Taj Mahal, but we do a lot of business here, and it's always for rent, so we want to advertise that if somebody needs a room. This room actually pays for itself, so thank you very much for your kind comments.
We have a couple of ground rules. First, we ask that you stand when you speak, and some of you have already signed up to talk. We'll have a microphone for you, and just speak into the microphone because it's being televised and recorded for playback later. We ask that one representative from a particular group or organization speak on behalf of the group. We learned the hard way, the first meeting we held in San Mateo where there was a senior citizens center that was scheduled to be closed, and we had 25 people show up, and they all wanted to talk. And we wanted to get as many points of view in as possible on a wide variety of issues. Those of you who haven't signed up, Mimi Kwan is out at the back of the room there, our public affairs manager. Mimi will take your name and put you on the list. And I'm going to turn it over now to Eric Rosales, who will start the meeting.
Wonderful. Well, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Eric Rosales. I joined the ABC 7 family about a year and a half ago after spending about seven and a half years down in the Central Valley of Fresno. So, I'm very happy to be here, and I thank you very much for showing up and giving us your input. So, let's get started here. First person to speak is Donna Axelson.
I thought it was the second person. Okay. I'm here to talk about the Cupertino Veterans Memorial. Last year in July, Matthew Axelson, who was serving with the Navy SEALs in Afghanistan along with 18 other special ops men, were killed in an operation there. And Matthew was born in Cupertino, and his story was in the local Cupertino Courier. And another local man, Tony Banderman, who had gone through middle school and high school with Matthew, came to the city council and suggested that they put some kind of a plaque or freestanding memorial in Matthew's memory. And the city council said, "You know, that's a wonderful idea, but we need to do something larger that would include all the people, men and women through the years that have given their lives for their country." They turned it over to the Parks and Rec Department, and they found a location in Memorial Park, which is a perfect place for a memorial. Sandra James and I, a former mayor of Cupertino, are co-chairing this project. And we have a local man, Paul Littieri, who designed Cali Mill Plaza here in town, and some other city plazas in the area, who's designing the memorial. We have a fabulous sculptor who's based in Florida. His name is W. Stanley Proctor, who's done sculptures around the country, who's doing the two bronze figures that are going to be part of the memorial. And he's planning, the two men together are planning for it to be a very interactive memorial, so people can not only go and have it be a contemplative place, but also, you know, interact with statues. We're beginning fundraising in a few weeks, and we're excited about that. We've received a lot of enthusiastic support from the community. We have a number of activities that we're starting to put on the calendar, and we're just looking forward to seeing this Veterans Memorial come to fruition. Right now, the plan is to have it dedicated next year on Memorial Day of 2007. So, we have a commitment from the sculptor for that date, so we're working toward that.
Donna, how much money do you need to raise?
We need to raise $250,000 to $300,000, and that will cover the cost of everything that needs to be done.
How much have you actually raised right now?
We have not started fundraising. We're waiting to get a nonprofit tax number.
Okay.
So, when do you think you'll actually start your first fundraising effort?
We're hoping to do that within the next six weeks to two months. We'd like to get it going, because when you look at Memorial Day of 2007, it's going to be here before we know it.
Well, if you can make sure that you have Eric's information and how to get ahold of him, we'd love to know when you start the fundraising effort. It might make a real nice story, especially by then you might have some renderings of what it's going to look like and that kind of thing.
Yes, we should have. And, you know, actually, Karina Rusk covered the story of Matthew's death back in July of 2005. So, you've already been involved with this memorial.
And I want to let you know, with your fundraising efforts, if you ever need an emcee, I'll be happy to donate my services. I'll go out on a limb right now and just say, yes, I would like to help you out.
Well, I have your card, and I will call you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You have it on camera. The next person that would like to speak is Charlie Ahern.
Hi, my name's Charlie Ahern. This afternoon, I was listening to a very interesting discussion about demographics and infrastructure, and I was interested in that for two reasons. One, that just really shocked me, was they were talking about the fact that apparently the population of California right now is about 37 million, and it's expected to grow by 10 million in the next 15 years. And I don't think we have any concept of how that's going to affect the state and our own communities. I know in Cupertino, for example, people have brought up the issue of infrastructure in terms that sort of say, you know, "The pipe is six inches in diameter, and it can never get any bigger because we're not going to make the investment to make the pipe bigger." You know, recently, it was a big issue in Sacramento. The governor's proposal, it doesn't sound like it's going to be on the ballot in June, but I think it's going to be coming up a lot more in the future. And I think what, you know, when they start talking billions and hundreds of billions, it's not really easy to understand how that's going to affect a specific community. So, I think whether it's Cupertino or other cities in the area, I think people need to understand what's coming in terms of population, and how are cities going to deal with that, particularly in terms of infrastructure? How are they going to fund it? And what's it going to really, how is it really going to affect the city? You know, are we going to have new highways, or lots of new water pipes? Or, you know, they were talking about transit, and they said, "Well, in order to make public transit really work, you need density." Well, density is a bad word in Cupertino. So, I don't know if we just sort of wall the city off and say, "The rest of California can grow, but we won't." I don't know how that works. So, that was my suggestion.
Curious, where did you hear the discussion?
KQED forum.
Was it on forum this morning?
No, it was actually a recorded session, yeah.
Interesting points you have there. The demographics and the infrastructure is something that we really try and hit hard home and actually move forward and look at the future and where we as a community, and I'm talking about the whole South Bay, of where we're going and what actually needs to be done. And these are the questions that, you brought up a very interesting point that, you know, we're going to have to take to our elected officials, not only up in Sacramento, but also Washington, D.C. Thank you. Our next person that would like to talk is Avi Katz. Avi?
That was close. It's Avi Katz.
Avi Katz, you got it.
Yeah, I'm president of the local high school board in this area, and I just have a story to tell you that kind of represents what people are like in Cupertino. And I'm not patting myself on the back for this because I was the one who did it, but about two years ago during the Lunar New Year Parade, I noticed that there was a young deputy who had one of the classic cars, I guess that the sheriff's department owned. It was a 1957 Ford. And of course, educationally, my background or part of it was in industrial arts, so I understood cars pretty well, and also older cars, because I taught auto shop, and kids had older cars they would bring in, and the deputy couldn't get it started. He just looked depressed. He was worried. And so, I walked over to him. I knew right away what the problem was. I knew it had a broken motor mount, and I knew that the only way he was going to get it started was to jiggle the shift lever to get it started. So, I went over and told him that, and he was relieved because it started, you know. Well, like I said, I'm not patting myself on the back, but this is kind of, this kind of illustrates what Cupertino folks are like. They're always willing to help each other out. You know, if I go to the local Starbucks or peach coffee and walk in, people know me, you know? And they're not just elected people, they're people from the whole community. It's like a small town almost. And I like the fact that I live in Cupertino because of that. Speaking about community support, on April the 7th, we're having our crab feed. It's the Fremont Union High School District Foundation Organization or Association that's sponsoring this, and the crab feed is set up to raise money for the school district. So, I'd like everybody, I'd like to invite you all to attend, and if you call the school district, you'll be able to find out how to get ahold of tickets. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Kristy Ola.
Hi, I'm Kristy Ola, and I'm senior pastor of the Good Samaritan United Methodist Church in Cupertino. I want to introduce you to Gail Chu. She is with me this evening. She's our associate pastor. I have only been pastor there for two and a half years, but I want to let you know that there are some non-community-sponsored agencies that are really working hard to bridge the changing demographics and needs of this community. We are located next door to a large shopping center that includes a Ranch 99. Much of the shopping center is Chinese, and our congregation has been multicultural for a long time. But about five years ago, we started with ESL classes, English Second Language classes. This has grown, not through any dollars outside of those of the church and some grant monies through the larger Methodist Church. We served about 300 people last year with English Second Language classes, and every Sunday afternoon, about 100 come for citizenship classes. The interesting thing for me is happening to be married to a Silicon Valley engineer. The folks that are coming to us are mostly immigrant, 70% to 80% from mainland China. They are not the wealthiest folks of Silicon Valley, though they may very much be educated. About 65% are domestic workers. They may live with their children and grandchildren. And some of their stories are just profound. We have a woman who was English Second Language teacher for a very long time from mainland China. She was, what Gail says, was an intellectual. She was an educated professor who spoke out against the communist government and was sent to Siberia literally for 20 years. So, some of these folks have found a community home, you know, walking through our doors and finding some services offered. And I think we're working really hard not to be a place where it says we have all the answers, but really to bridge understanding just by getting to know each other. Many of the ESL teachers are Euro-American, and some are not, and it's quite an interesting experience every day. Okay?
Well, I tell you what, thank you very much. No, there are a lot of story ideas out there such as that, and I just, before we go on, I just want to let everybody to know that I have my business cards out there right up in front, and it actually has my email on. I passed out a couple, but I know a couple of people are coming in right now. So, please, take my business card, call me up. I'm always willing to talk on the phone if I'm not there. Email me, I'll email you back. I answer all the emails, and your input is what's really going to make a difference in getting the word out, and we are there to listen such as ABC 7 Listens. So, thank you very much, and wonderful story, and there are a lot of stories out there.
A quick follow-up question. When do you hold the ESL classes?
Literally seven days a week.
Days, nights?
Mostly days, because a lot of the folks take buses, and it's easier to get around in the daytime.
And the reason I ask is, this is just the type of information that we find very helpful, because, you know, it may not be a story tomorrow, but it's a big issue. Assimilation into the community and being able to cross that bridge from one culture to the other, and all that is very important, and it's one that really resonates throughout all the communities of the Bay Area. And when we find an opportunity where the issue is coming to the headlines because there's legislation, or there, you know, this bill right now with illegal immigration, you know, Eric's done several stories on it, we've done a, done the story in different parts of the Bay Area. It may be that we're going to give you a call and want to come into one of your classes and talk to some of your students and one of your teachers, and we're probably going to call you like an hour before.
Yeah, I understand that.
Because we don't get a lot of advance notice sometimes. Our morning editorial meeting happens around 9:45 in the morning, and everything's pretty much wrapped up by 10:30, but normally, we're already out the door working on things. And sometimes, those decisions are made really because something has broken somewhere else. So, just wanted to kind of give you that sense that we will certainly have your name and number in our rolodex.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And even if that issue actually continues on into the night, I come in around 3:00, and we have our editorial meeting around 3:30. So, that is for the 11:00 news. So, it's constant, you know, 24 hours a day, we have somebody there in the news department, and it's constantly thinking about the next broadcast and how we can further the story or bring something new that's making headlines into the limelight. The next person that we are going to talk with is Leah, excuse me, I'm sorry. Let's go to Hema Kundarg. Kundarg.
Hi, I'm Hema Kundargi, resident of Cupertino for past 14 years, and I want to talk about the Cupertino Library, a wonderful institution here in Cupertino. And in the month of May, there's Asian Pacific Heritage Month celebration in Cupertino, and there are different events planned through the Cupertino Library. And I'm hosting one program called as saris, the ethnic costume of India. And the program sort of highlights the origin and the styles and how it is adapted over time. It's the only costume which has been in style for about 5,000 years, and the interesting part for this presentation, which is going to be on May 6th at 2:00, is all the participants are going to be non-Indians. You've seen Indians always in saris, but this time, I decided, why not show how saris look beautiful on any women? So, this program is something which I'm in the process of planning, and I just wanted to share that with you.
I think Tracy would be a perfect candidate for that, because she has past experience.
Yeah, I went to India last year for my cousin's wedding, so I have some saris that we wore for the wonderful ceremony. So, that's a great, great program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Next person that we're going to have talk is Leah Balkam. Balkam, thank you so much, Leah.
I work with sports.
Here we go, we're just going to get you a microphone.
Thanks. I work with Sports Potential. We're a sports sciences and education services company out of Menlo Park, and we are partnering with a bunch of different communities starting this summer to offer sports readiness programming for kids. And Cupertino is one of the biggest communities so far that we've signed on, starting June 24th and June 25th, and going every other weekend this summer until end of August, we're going to be having events, putting up to 80 kids per day on Saturdays and Sundays through a round of sports skills and cognitive readiness assessments, and their results will be presented to them in their own personalized website that they can have and play with. And we're introducing them to a variety of sports and activities, so 38 to be exact. And so, we're really trying to turn around some of the issues with youth sports, where we see 70% of the kids dropping out by age 13. So, this is geared towards boys and girls ages eight to 12.
So, if I put my child in one of your weekend camps, what's this assessment or score, or whatever it is that I get at the end of the two days?
So, actually, you will receive your own website, and it's a very educational tool for the parents. You'll see from a skill development perspective where your child is in relation to their peer group amongst a variety of sports skills like object control, balance, agility, hand-eye coordination, foot-eye coordination, also their cognitive level, and then you see how that relates to different skills or different sports and recreational activities. And so, we're matching sports to kids' skills and abilities to foster positive experiences for them, which is so important at an early age, and, you know, saying, "Hey, don't specialize so soon, and, you know, let's not have the Tommy John surgeries at age 11 and age 12. Let's have fun. Let's enjoy a variety of experiences in sports."
But you could also...
And the child receives their own website as well.
But you could also end up finding out that your child, while they're a great soccer player, really ought to be playing golf or tennis, because that's their aptitude.
Well, well, be careful with aptitude.
If they're not currently involved with that, I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense of what you're doing.
Right. Well, it's skill development, right? So, each sport requires a certain level of skill. So, if they haven't achieved the level of skill needed for a sport, say soccer, we provide online drills that they can go, and you could practice with your child, so they would gain that level of comfort and gain the competence needed to play soccer. It's not, "Hey, don't play soccer, go play these other things." It's participate, do a lot of sports, but, you know, you might need this support to feel more comfortable playing this level of sport.
So, is this through the Parks and Recreation, or is this a private company?
Yes. We are partnering with Parks and Recreation Departments. So, Cupertino, we're scheduling with Saratoga in the fall, Morgan Hill in the fall, and also various departments throughout North Peninsula, East Bay.
And what's the cost?
Per child, it's $135, and it's a two-hour assessment, and that includes lifetime access to both of the websites for the parents and the kids. And there are a lot of value-added interactive features to keep the kids involved and coming back to the website.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Maybe even one suggestion of putting, you know, the whole obesity and the childhood obesity.
Oh, absolutely.
And then also touch on maybe recipes and things like that, that the kids can, healthy recipes.
Definitely.
Let's go to, and I apologize if I am butchering these names, Rahul Vandukar? Vandukar? Was I close?
Oh, pretty close.
Wonderful.
Much better than many other people.
Thank you so much.
It's Vandukar, by the way. I am a resident of Cupertino for past six years, and I would like to thank you for coming to this beautiful city. There are so many heartwarming stories, and I, unfortunately, I have a depressing story, but I would like to say a good news before I come to my actual story. Destination Imagination is a program for kids which is organized all over the country, and on March 11th, there was a tournament held in San Jose, and Lawson Middle School and Collins Elementary Schools took part. One team from Lawson and one team from Collins have won the, one team from Lawson came third in the tournament, and one team from Collins came second in their category, and they are going to Sacramento to take part in the state tournament. And the third team, which was from Lawson, scored 100% in a part of a tournament called Instant Challenge Tournament. So, my hats off to those kids. Now, the depressing part. Yesterday and the day before yesterday, we saw 517 high-density units passed by city council despite an overwhelming majority of residents opposing it. It was really sad. Yesterday, we tried to convince them, the city council, and absolutely didn't work. Even mayor said that the 137 condos they were going to be built were in the most horrible place. Everybody agreed that that's not the place. It is right next to 280, next to a three-story parking garage in an area where absolutely no, you know, nobody would come to that, those condos unless they have a guarantee of Cupertino schools. And I'm not trying to make a political statement, I just, you know, just want to honestly say that we all came, tried our best to convince, and the motion won 3-2, you know, that's divided. So, anyway, just want to express my sadness over that, you know, the council didn't listen to us. I'm glad you guys are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person that's going to speak is Dennis Whitaker.
I'm a longtime resident of Cupertino. I'm wondering where you folks were last November when we needed you out here. We had a tremendous election. Let me backtrack for a second. 1989, we had Loma Prieta earthquake. Our city really came through, our citizens really came through. There were truckloads of care and goods going to Watsonville to help those people out. Sometime around 1998, 1999, our city culture has changed drastically. Many of us 32-year-old residents, or longer or shorter, have always wanted to keep Cupertino as a suburban area and not an urban area. But starting around the time that I reflected, things have been changing drastically. I was past president of the Concerned Citizens of Cupertino that put on an election last November out of concerns of heights, density, and setback. These measures came about because of a feeling of a huge disconnect between the citizens and the city government. The government of the people, by the people, and for the people doesn't seem to exist in Cupertino. The city government seems to listen to outsiders more than they listen to the majority of their citizens. The city government seems to be more concerned about outside interests than they do about listening to their citizens. Again, I ask, where were you folks last November? All of the residents on one side or the other needed you. The politicians seem to run campaigns based on one statement and then turn around when the votes come through, as happened in the last three projects that were voted on. The distrust still remains and seems to be growing. We had three initiatives in heights, densities, and setbacks, and a group of us just went to the Bombay Oven for dinner, and the owner at that restaurant echoed a statement that's been happening over and over and over. The Pandera people at the Chinese fast-food restaurant on Stevens Creek and Stelling have said this, the people at Queesnos have said it, the people at the BJ's Restaurant. The city approves projects and does not allow parking, so what's sufficient parking? If the city government would talk to any of the three of those owners, I'm sure they're going to hear an earful. And so, I hope that the disconnect goes away. I hope the city government listens. This is a volatile issue that's been happening, and I wear a patch on my lapel because I'm going to be assisting Donna with the Veterans Memorial, and the patch shows the Americal Division, which I served under. I wish you folks were here last night. We had democracy in action with some young people that we can all be very proud of, and I was so proud to be a veteran, a Vietnam veteran, when I heard those kids talk last night. So, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And if you do have something that comes up in the future that you think we ought to be here for, you know how to reach Eric, you ought to give him a call. The only way we can respond is if you let us know. As I like to characterize our coverage challenge, we have to cover the nine Balkan states of the Bay Area. It's not, it's not an easy challenge, as you know. It's a very diverse area. It's a, it's a place where, quite frankly, the people in Marin County, they don't really care what happens in Santa Clara County. People in San Francisco don't care what happens in Alameda. We've got to figure out a way to get to all these places, cover the news in a way that's relevant and interesting to everyone watching. But we are dead serious about covering local issues. The thing we have to be careful about in our editorial decisions is what... The thing we have to be careful about in our editorial decisions is, is at what point is across the line being so parochial and so just about Cupertino that no one else is going to be interested? And that's the challenge we have. And I think housing density and setbacks and all that, those are issues that are resonating throughout every community. I mean, I live in Walnut Creek. We're in the midst of starting the public comment process in our 2025 plan. A lot of people there think that the downtown has gotten to the point where it needs to maybe dial back a little bit. Housing in general is such a huge problem in the Bay Area. So anytime we have an opportunity to address that issue in the microcosm of, say, a Cupertino or another community, it's very doable. And again, we wouldn't know about it. We wouldn't know about the differences of opinions and the challenges that you have unless we hear it from you. So we do appreciate you sharing the feedback. And you have our email addresses and let it, let us know.
And I just, I just want to reiterate that please, if you can, take my card. My phone number is, if you want to write this down, four-one-five-six-seven-two-nine-one-three-nine. And I'll mention that again, four-one-five-six-seven-two-nine-one-three-nine. That is my cell phone. It's on twenty-four hours a day. That's the way the station gets a hold of me because news happens twenty-four hours a day. But again, we don't know about these issues until you give us a call. Hey, Eric, it might be a good idea to be at the Cupertino City Council meeting tonight. There's going to be some hot-button issues. Here's, here's some examples, blah, 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 you know? Just, just giving me that little bit of heads up can give me the head start to be able to start checking into it. Because like my boss Kevin Keishen mentioned, we have to cover such a wide area, and we try to make our stories impact everyone, not just Cupertino residents, but, but like the issue of city government, parking, parking issue, those are infrastructure, those are issues that are going to affect everyone. Let's move on now with, let me see, Orin Mahoney with the Cupertino Rotary Club.
Hi there. My name is Orin Mahoney. Let me put my other hat on first. I'm a city council member. I was one of the three that voted three-two for the project. So I obviously have a little different view from Dennis on that. But, but we'd be glad to have you guys down. I want to talk about something else. I want to talk about kind of a program. So Cupertino Rotary is very active here in Cupertino. Do a wide variety of both community service, international service, and youth service. Those are the three things that we do as a service organization. I'd like to focus a little bit tonight on a youth service activity that started last year. So we have as part of Rotary, there's a, another group called Interact, which is the high school arm, if you will, of Rotary. And we have a very strong Interact organization here in the Cupertino High Schools. I think it's for, over four hundred, over four hundred high school students that are in there in a service organization. And up until now, to be fair, we have, our club has kind of used them as a labor force for when we're having festivals and things like that, where, you know, we, we call on them, they put their service hours in, and they do things. Well, last year, and they do, separate from that, they do things within the schools. Last year, they stepped up and decided to put a program together called International Night. And again, I think this is reflective of the community. We had an event, we have an event every year called the Lunar New Year Unity Parade. And kind of in conjunction with that, they were thinking of doing it separately. We tied together. They put on an International Night concert where the kids from Interact and from the high schools, you know, did a concert reflecting their different cultures. And the beneficiary of that concert was a program that Rotary has called Polio Plus, which is to stamp out polio around the world. They raised last year sixty-five-hundred dollars through that concert. It's the equivalent in the Polio Plus program of ten thousand polio immunizations, in other words, when it, when it gets rolled out. Obviously, it was very successful. They, it was their idea. They put it together. They drove the whole program. It was so successful that this year it's going to be expanded. It's expanded beyond Cupertino into several different cities now through, through the different Interact clubs. And this, now a word from our sponsor, the second concert will be this Saturday. It'll be at Montevista High School in a larger venue than they had last year in the auditorium there, the Madison Theater, I guess it's called. And this year, they have a different beneficiary. The beneficiary is a program called Pump Aid. And Pump Aid is a program to do clean water projects in Africa. And it's these very simple manual pumps, bicycle wheel-driven pumps that make the difference of clean, you know, in a well, where you can dig a well, and the difference of clean water and surface water, you know, and all the diseases associated with that. So all these this year are going to this Pump Aid, and it's going to be rolled out, and it's just on a roll. And I guess, again, to me, it's a reflection of, I'm a thirty-seven-year resident of Cupertino. It's a reflection of the value of youth in the community. It's a reflection of the international, you know, mix of the community and tying that together with the service organizations. It's kind of the best of Cupertino. Thanks.
A quick question about Rotary.
Sure.
Just curious, because, I mean, I've, I grew up, obviously, covering a lot of Rotary activities and in every community I've worked in. How is the Rotary building its membership? Is it through the Interact program?
No, no, typically, it's not. We're, well, it's interesting. I've been a Rotarian, I want to say, six years now. I actually got recruited in a funny way. I ran, I first ran for the city council in nineteen ninety-nine against Richard Lowenthal over here and became good friends through the race. So that's another thing about Cupertino politics. People that run against each other actually can become friends and, you know, unlike in higher office where things go south. And Richard was in Rotary already and invited me to take a look at Rotary. And I had thought about Rotary as kind of a networking business organization. And I had worked at HP where I, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't like a small businessman who was trying to do that. And once I saw that it was really a service organization, I was already involved in a lot of other things. I was very interested in, and I've been very involved, and I'm the secretary this year and was the international service director. Our club has grown a lot, and part of it is because of the projects we do internationally. We've gone to Guatemala two years in a row to do facial reconstructive surgery. We've been to Ghana for polio immunization. We go down to Texcoco every year, and I went down on one of those trips a year ago where we distributed six hundred wheelchairs to people that didn't, otherwise wouldn't have wheelchairs. I mean, literally, people are carrying kids in on their shoulders. You know, it's not like, I want a new wheelchair. It's like, you know, they're dragging them in on their shoulders because they don't have a wheelchair. And then last year, I went to China where we're, and I'll be going back this year, where we're partnering up with an organization here called the Xin Chin Educational Foundation that builds schools in rural China. And we're contributing equipment to the schools and partnering up with them. So we recruit, you know, almost kind of word of mouth in the community. We're working hard to, to build that structure within all the different diverse members of the community so that our club reflects the changing nature of the community. And that's part of how the China project got going, for example. So typically, it doesn't come out, what happens, you know, you're an Interactor in high school, then they go off to college. We just actually have a brand-new Roter Act, which is kind of the college-level thing that just started at Deansa. Up until a few years ago, we didn't have that. Then classically, people go off, you know, it's go to work, you know, raise a family, don't have a lot of free time, you know, your volunteer efforts, and my own volunteer efforts at that time are more associated with your kids and schools and all the things that you're going to be hearing about the rest of tonight. And then later, kind of, it comes back to, okay, now, you know, I'm either semi-retired or, or whatever, now it's time to, you know, pay back in the community. And that's when the Rotarians seem to come back in. So we have a broad range. I wouldn't say, you know, they're typically not the twenty-year-olds in the club.
Well, I tell you what, if, I would like to speak, you know, at one of your meetings, if, if possible. Give me a phone call, and I'll, I also want to know more about the Xin Chin organization and when you're planning that trip.
That'd be great. Trip is, we're leaving May seventh. I'd be glad to talk to you about that as well. It's really good. Last year's-
So I can put in the expense report now. I can put in the expense report now for that trip.
Okay. We got you. I'm building a list. No, it'd be great. I'd love to talk to you more.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. The next person is going to be Nabe Muller.
Nate.
Nate, excuse me, Nate.
No problem. I'm a record producer in Cupertino, probably the only one out here that does that. I'm basically putting together a three-day media literacy activity. It's called Keep It Moving. And what it's going to entail is I'll be working with fifteen kids from the Boys and Girls Club. And we're going to walk them through a whole three-step process of composing a commercial, a thirty-second commercial with Toyota Scion. And this, this media literacy event, it's going to teach kids how to write succinctly, get their point across very quickly. So the first part is we're going to be having a writing contest with the Boys and Girls Club, fifteen kids. And then from there, we're going to bring the kids up to San Francisco to visit the number-one station in the Bay Area, KMEL. And the kids are going to actually get on air and get to play their commercial. It's going to be a commercial buy. And then the final event will be an event at Capital Toyota where the kids will get to see the results of their writing and their commercial by having, you know, people show up. We're also going to have a Bay Area entertainer there. Probably Mr. Fab, I don't know if you guys have heard of him, but he's an artist who's being constantly played on that station right now. And, you know, it has a lot of positive benefits for the kids. Right now, a lot of the educational extracurricular programs in the Bay Area have been cut. And this is something that directly rates, relates to speech, writing skills, and also language. All these are going to be highlighted at each level of the event. And tentatively, it's looking to happen the end of April. We're also going to have Merle Saunders from the Recording Academy. He's going to present the kids with some certificates of achievement. The Recording Academy, if you guys don't know, are the people that vote on the Grammys, who wins the Grammys. So that's it.
Oh, it sounds like a great program.
Yeah.
If, if you can, if you, if you can email me a little bit more information, you can actually receive my card just right out, right out in front. Or let me go and give you my, my email address, just in case, so you can write it down, too. It's Eric, E-R-I-K.
Okay. Just a second.
Dot.
I don't have a pen on me?
No problem. Yeah, it's actually right on the card. Rosales, R-O-S-A-L-E-S, at ABC dot com.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next person that's going to speak is Linda Chuen, Chen? Yes?
First, I want to say thank you very much to come down here to listen to the community. I really appreciate it. I think everybody here will appreciate it because the council member, I mean, they slept by our, by us, they don't listen to us. That makes the community feel angry and feel sad. The Walco condo projects, okay, we want to, I mean, to make Walco successful, but I think Walco's successful is relies on, I mean, the more retail stores and some good retail stores, so can attract people to come down here to shop and not condos. And the condo project doesn't bring, I mean, the money to the city, doesn't bring, I mean, the test revenues to the city. So it doesn't benefit to the city and doesn't benefit to the community. The only one will get benefit is the Walco owners. They build all the condominiums, will create a lot of traffic jams, will create overcrowded school, which is where crowded here already. And the condo, okay, could lock down the wall, which, okay, give, I mean, security to the community, okay, and keep the committee private, the privacy and quiet. But Walco owns the, I mean, owns, I mean, the wall. And if they build a condominium there, well, is the potential to lock down the wall is there, so which the community cannot accept it. And what I said is, the condo, I mean, the council members, they don't listen because none of them to live in our community. So that's why, I mean, everybody want to speed up and let them know how do we feel and what is going to happen, I mean, to our, to Cupertino. No one wants to turn Cupertino to condo Tino. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person to speak is Simon Ho.
Hi, my name is Simon Ho. I left here for about eight years now. So today, actually, I was kind of, came here for initially more to, I thought there would be more community participation or reaction to the council meeting thing about Walco, which personally, just, we followed it just very, not too long ago. But I found it, I was going to share some perspective, and then I'll tell you a little story about my life in Cupertino and something that's happening that I think might be of interest. I think as far as the, the experience with the council meeting, getting involved as a citizen of Cupertino, it was actually very enlightening personally, because I think until this event happened, as a citizen, kind of, sort of, a little ashamed to say that we've been so busy with our lives and you kind of view the city thing as sort of out there, and they're taking care of business, and we do our own thing. And then when we hear about the project, some of those things, and part of it is because it's sort of, you know, in backyard, so we want to get, you know, get involved and find out. So I thought it was a good, very good, from your, the station perspective of if you ever come back, I think it's a way to find out. I think it was the mayor who said this is, it is a lesson of representative democracy, right? We elect official and they out there making some decisions. But what I found was, and I was able to come for the, for the session part of it, I had to take care of some family business. But what's interesting, the, the topic was so interesting, and I think the community emotion is so real. And, you know, I, you know, my wife and I and the kids, we actually kind of was glued to the TV because, first of all, we didn't even know that the, a lot of this was actually recorded for us, like Channel twenty-two or twenty-one at home. And so we watched the whole thing till one o'clock. Well, I think it was amazing how this thing dragged out and, you know, so, so I think that was, that was a really good lesson for community to get involved. And so I think one thing, if nothing else, that good to get out, come out of this is that the community is realizing that there are a lot of issues that we need to get involved in besides the Walco project. So I think that's one thing. And then just the other, one little quick aspect was, one, as part of this learning, I was going to say, by the way, that gluing to the TV is probably one of the best reality TV I thought was, so you hear about this, but this is actually in the city government, there's a lot of good stuff, too. So, and one of the things I learned from there, which I don't understand, which I think hopefully over time we all learn as part of this process, is that, like, in this whole hearing thing, we had a two hearings. And last night was supposed to be the second hearing. And I felt like, I actually didn't speak, but I thought, even if whatever I want to speak, it sort of echoed by a lot of the other residents. But what I found kind of interesting as a reflection was, I think it literally took about, I think it was at six o'clock, and, you know, I think there's item two, probably till twelve o'clock. So it took about six hours for the resident pros and cons. Most of a lot, I, to be frank, I think a lot of people who live here, they all feel, I think, pretty strongly about the impact and all that, so they view the opposition. And yet, I think if you have a hearing process, and that's a part of the process I don't understand, right, that I hope to learn, for six hours for people to speak, I think there are a lot of concerns to view by the residents. And yet, I think it took the council about, you know, less than probably forty minutes to comment on something, and then they can make a decision. And the, and in the case from what happened, I think last night, there were actually one council, two council members who switched their vote from yes to no and no to yes. And to me, one of the things that I learned, I think, a long time ago, even in child conflict resolution or even business, right, that if you have issues, you always list them. And then you should have some kind of resolution to get buy-in from people to say, okay, now for example, we talked about traffic. Frankly, I think, I'm sure there are a lot of facts about, you know, the traffic and all that. Some of those are probably fears, some of those, but I'm sure there are a lot of facts that can be addressed so that those concerns could be addressed one way or the other versus saying, well, we actually have some differences, and then it's almost- almost like the council member wanting good for the city and then so they voted one way and then the community feel like, the residents feel like, oh man, we can't not listen to and, you know, those tensions. So, anyway, the summary of that, I think it's very exciting, actually, the, the city kind of a government is actually, you know, for the first time, I, I've been in the, uh, US for 25 years now, been a citizen for 10 years. And so I thought, wow, this is my civic lessons, I thought it was good. And of course, uh, I'll be getting more involved in the city and, you know, learning that. So then the other story I want to tell you is a little bit about, uh, I think what's interesting that's happening in the Silicon Valley, we lived here again eight years, so I seen the dot com boom and all those transitions and outsourcings and all that. I just want to share a personal, little personal story about what's happening in Cupertino and I'm sure in many place, uh, places in, uh, in the Silicon Valley as far as the transformation. Um, and have you, uh, have you familiar with the book, The World is Flat by, uh, Thomas Friedman?
Read it, cover to cover.
Okay, good.
Couldn't put it down.
Yeah, so I guess, uh, in a way, um, you know, I'm actually one of the, uh, the small case study of The World is Flat, right? So, uh, about five years ago, uh, I started a, a small startup company and I met a fellow, my partner from India. And he was one of the first wave of folks that came here for the dot com ventures. And we worked on a, um, solution for the childcare industry. We help, uh, childcare providers to get online and, and, uh, you know, help them run their business and service the children and the families, right, that needs care in childcare. But I think the, I think the interesting thing, I think, I was going to share with you was that in Thomas Friedman's terminology, The World is Flat is that, uh, a lot of these issues of outsourcing and all those are happening, now most people thought of it as sort of for the, the dialogue idea of the world, that, you know, they hire so many people. But I guess, uh, my personal experience is that because of the, the broadband allows, you know, his whole theme was that it enables individuals with creative ideas to work with people around the world, to create solutions. Uh, and so in this case, it's a case where my partner actually, he actually eventually went back to India and we have a team now there to help us with the development and all that. So our goal is to, once we have established, we'll scale up and, you know, uh, the, we will be expanding our business, serving the, the childcare business. Right now primarily in the Bay Area, but we are scaling to, you know, statewide, nationwide. And I thought that's, uh, it's happening in Cupertino and it's, it's linking to the rest of the world. And to me, that was a pretty, uh, it's interesting to living, to live through what Friedman is describing in his book.
What is it exactly, your, your business? What's the business doing? How are you helping childcare?
Yeah, actually, the, the thing usually when I mention that, um, I'm in the business of childcare and we have a team in India, the, the first reaction, they thought, you mean you can outsource childcare to India? And so, well, not quite, we're not taking care of children. But what, what we do is, we actually, you know, just like you heard of the, uh, the new, these days, the new buzzword in the tight tag is the software as a service, meaning that, you know, so many industry and niche are changing from buying desktop software, which is hard to maintain and install and all that, to, just like you, you and I get the cellphone as a service delivered, right? So now, a lot of companies and businesses are creating solution and deliver the business application as a, through the web, as a service to the, to the customer. So for example, in our case, we deliver various, uh, services, we help the childcare provider maintain their accounting payment, uh, we help them with delivering e-newsletter to their parents, we create a yearbook for the families, you know, we help, we provide tools for the staff to take picture of the children during the, happening during the, the day and they make a yearbook out of it and they share with the parents through the web and, you know, that sort of thing.
Do you have a school, preschool right now where you are testing the application?
Uh, we, yeah, no, we've been actually doing business for five years now, so we have about, uh, 20 clients and about 100 centers in the, um, actually throughout the states and a few other states as well.
Okay, 'cause I had misunderstood, it sounded like you were developing this, so this is actually...
Yeah, so...
But it's an ongoing product you continue to work on.
Oh, yeah, and that's the, the good thing about, uh, the idea of the software as a service is that historically, if you buy a software, it takes, once you put in like Microsoft, right, and you hear about the latest, the last upgrade or the version of Windows was 2001, I believe, when the, and they're supposed to release the, the latest 2000 Vista this year, but it's going to be postponed. Six years later, they're doing an upgrade. So in, in our business, when you deliver software as a service, you literally upgrade them, in our case, almost on a daily basis because the software is on one server, right? So your client just log, it's like you go online banking, you log into your account and you get the latest software. So it's, it's really exciting, that's the other part, new thing about, you know, the, the, the business model and what, you know.
Well, this is again, a great example of, of a story where, uh, we might not go do it tomorrow, but, but certainly when we have an opportunity to do something that ties into the whole outsourcing issue, um, it would be really neat to be able to get your partner you work with in India on a, on a webcam and, and, and talk to him.
Yeah, I mean, you know, even in that, uh, in our store, we are a small guy doing a, you know, small business initially, right? But what's amazing, even, you know, in a very bootstrap way, we use free, you know, Yahoo, you know, instant messenger. We, we email each other, we get on the, uh, uh, IM voice. So there's so much of those, uh, those are things like Friedman is talking about, flat, whoa, we, it literally is, well, we have a broadband at home, so all those things are coming to us and to them, right? So we're communicating, it doesn't matter if it's next door, 10,000 miles away.
Lots of innovative ideas, Simon.
And, and you've given us your, uh, phone number and everything?
Uh, not yet, but...
If you could sign up, on the sign up on the way out so we can reach you, that, that's great. And if, uh, you talked about the world is flat and then I've, I've told this story a few times in the newsroom, but it's, it, it's another example of how in, in, in what we do, uh, the, the world is flat because it used to be, we would do a story and the impact would really be felt on the nine county Bay Area where we happen to be broadcasting our signal. Now with the advent of the internet and with video streaming on the internet and interest groups that have email chains and list servers that are worldwide, well, our, our investigative reporter, Dan Noes, did a story of, of a few months ago about, uh, an issue of Trader Joe's markets. There's been a, a big lobbying effort on the part of some animal rights groups, uh, calling upon Trader Joe's to start selling, uh, cage-free eggs because their Trader Joe's brand eggs were being manufactured in factory farms with what they call battery caged hens, eight to a cage. And animal rights activists think that's, that's cruel treatment of the animals. No matter what your opinion, Trader Joe's had been going for a couple of years basically saying, we can't find a supplier, we can't do this, you know, we would love to, but we can't. And we had undercover video inside one of these factory farms, uh, and we kind of showed the conditions that were there, and they, they weren't exactly pleasant. Uh, we did this story, um, some group picked it up and put it on their website, put a link to it, they sent it as an email address, uh, an email to their list server, uh, the Humane Society of the United States, uh, sent it out to their people. And everybody got a link to our story and watched it and emailed us saying, wow, what a, what a great story, thank you for doing it. And then they also emailed the president of Trader Joe's saying, why don't you stop doing this? This is an awful thing. Um, that was on a Thursday night at 11 o'clock. By Monday morning, Trader Joe's was on the phone to the Humane Society saying, what do you want? When can we get together? Our email system's been shut down. Um, and just like that, the change was made, they no longer sell Trader Joe's eggs under that Trader Joe's, uh, under the, the battery caged hens, they now found a free-range egg supplier. Uh, and it's just something that would have never happened if it was just the nine county Bay Area where our work was being, being read or, or being watched. So it is, it is a remarkable phenomenon, what's happening with, especially with broadband, how it is really bringing everything to anyone who has a broadband connection.
Next speaker will be Lloyd Martin.
You guys probably, you know, a number of people have mentioned the lively meetings that we've had in the last couple of, well, actually, it's been months now. One thing I'd like you to do, and we'll be following up with you, is this is, this is a great town. I've lived here 15 years and, you know, you look around this facility, just the democratic process here in this building that goes on is fantastic. But there's some decisions that are going on right now that affect, you know, probably more than just Cupertino, it's the whole valley. And it's, it's, it's a vision thing. There's a vision from one part of Cupertino, which is high growth, high density. And another part of Cupertino, and most of us who've lived here for a while, that are, that is more of a staged growth. And there's a lot of issues around that and it gets pretty lively. And the great thing is, is you can go back now and look at the, um, presentations, the whole debates, it's all on the internet, so you can review that, you know, it's cat, it's podcast out or wherever, whatever you want to call it. But it's covering an issue where we have one, one town of Cupertino which is splitting into two. And DeAnza Boulevard is kind of the split. And there's one town that we live in, condo Tino now, where all the development's going on. And then there's the other side of town where there's no development going on. And our schools, you know, across the city are overcrowded, which is the function of a lot of people moving in and wanting to go to good schools. But we're seeing, my daughter this year got transferred out of a class and half of her, well, not half, 40% of her school resides in a trailer. Um, there's classes being held in music rooms. So it's, it's an issue where, you know, you've got everything, a great story for you, you've got conflict of interest, you've got sunshine law issues, you've got a lot of things, all in a healthy debate, and the next step is, of the issue is referendum. So we'd love you to cover it. Thank you.
Um, just a couple of points, uh, what sunshine issues?
We can go into that, it's probably not the best thing to do here.
Okay.
But things that are going on that the community can't impact and changes to the plan or alterations to the plan that the community was not able to impact.
And then you mentioned referendum, as in there's one...
Well, there's signatures you can sign, the Toll Brothers Initiative and the Valco, the Valco proposal ordinances, um, there's actually petitions you can sign outside for anyone who wants to about that referendum. So we're trying to gather signatures on that right now because, again, there's two different visions. There's a vision from the city council and probably some members of the community, and then there's a vision of the citizens of other parts of the community.
Is this a referendum you're hoping to get on the November?
Yes.
Ball?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Uh, next one, Martin Yi, you?
Um, my name is Martin Yu. I come from, originally from mainland China and I get used to the system that government will make all the decision for the people. They don't care what people feeling and what people want, they just make a decision for you. And in the last couple of months, I, I come to a few council hearing here. At the beginning, I feel really great, this is a really democratic country and those council member are very nice, gentle, sit on the stage and they listen what we are talking. But at the end, especially yesterday, I feel really disappointed about this system. The system looks so nice, but it's not really working. What I'm, the reason I'm saying this is because in the last couple of days, I see the objection to the Valco condo development is so overwhelming. But for the council members, it doesn't seem to hear anything. They already made their mind before the hearing, so what they, when they come to the decision time, they just decide whatever they want. They don't he, they don't want to hear or they don't listen what the people in the city telling them. So I kind of feel very disappointed about that. And I talked to many people in this city, they all feel this city is developing too fast, a way too fast. I mean, we come to this city, we like the environment, we like this, the suburban living style. And I feel that this council, or maybe since last term and this term, they are exhausting the resource we have in the city. They are developing the plan supposed to be developed by our next generation or even after next generation. And I don't know in the future what our generation, they can, they can develop on. I mean, if all the resource already be exhausted, I mean, that's really too bad. Another thing is that, uh, we repeatedly heard from the, the Valco project developer to say, this is a very risky project and there is a very small chance to suc, to be successful. I mean, everybody hear that. Our council member, I think they are very intelligent and everybody have a little math background knows, if you have a project has very small tiny possibility to success, why you approve this project in the first place? So you approve something you want it to be fail, is that something you want? I don't think so. So anybody have some sense, they should deny this project from the first place. If you see no chance to success, then reject it. Well, that's just my common sense. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I, I, I think there's a controversy over the condo project at Valco.
Exactly. It looks like, uh, it looks like we've got our story tomorrow.
If we learn nothing else tonight. But no, that, that, that is really a, it, it is an ongoing issue. I mean, you, if you look at any polling that goes on throughout the Bay Area, if it's not traffic, it's housing and it's housing costs. And the reason why we have housing cost problems is because we don't have enough of it. And it's a struggle that everybody has and there's a big push to have high-density housing, not just here in Cupertino, but all over the Bay Area and, and people want it, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, as we've all been hearing, they would like to see all the high-density right around BART stations and light rail stations. Uh, it's a, it's a very difficult issue, very complex issue with so many different stakeholders that, uh, that it's a, it's a tough decision no matter which way you break on it, uh, it's a very difficult issue.
Moving on now to Shilpa, Josh.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Shilpa Zsotsi, good evening, everybody. I'm going to talk about Cupertino, the birthplace of iPod. Uh, when you talk about Cupertino, Apple comes to your mind. Now, for most people, schools come to their mind. I'm going to talk about the schools. The schools are overcrowded, they are. And the management is trying very hard to accommodate all the kids that are coming. Today you call the school, they tell you the number of registered student, tomorrow you call, two or three kids are up. That is the reality. And, uh, since the land is, land has such a high premium as a residential land, what is happening in Cupertino now? Properties are being declared functionally obsolete. Functionally obsolete is the key word in Cupertino. You own an industrial estate, you own a commercial land, you keep it vacant, you charge high rents probably, I don't know, that's up to you to investigate. But the, the high rents are proper for San Jose in Commercial District because that is Commercial District. Cupertino, they cannot demand those rates. If they are demanding those and the properties are remaining empty, that's why they are functionally obsolete. Because they are functionally obsolete for two, three, four years, now they come to the council and ask for rezoning. They are rezoning it to high-density condos that none of us want. And the pressure is building on schools. There is no way out of this circle for us. So I think when you cover Cupertino, I think this, this could be a good story for you. Any school you go to, any, any parent you ask who have children in the school in Cupertino, you will hear the same story. The children are sitting in the portables, there is, uh, this year, where the, the school my child goes to, they sit in music room. There are eight portables in the school right now, there is room for one more. Uh, last evening, if you see the meeting, uh, we have very talented kids in Cupertino. Uh, four of the kids had drawn, uh, very nice cartoons. They had a cartoon of, uh, there were, the school had so many portables that it had no ground left for the, playground left for children to play on. The children are playing on the top of the school. That would be an innovative way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chi Hua Wei?
Chi Hua.
Chi Hua.
Chi Hua.
Chi Hua Wei.
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming.
Uh, it's my pleasure. Uh, hello, everyone, my name is Chi Hua Wei. Uh, I represent organization of special needs families. Uh, we are the, uh, grassroots organization founded in Cupertino that basically help, uh, special needs children and their families. Uh, special needs, uh, represent developmental disability. Um, so, uh, some of the example are autism, you probably heard about it, uh, uh, very, becoming a very popular, uh, subject in not only Cupertino, Bay Area and possibly California and the whole nation. So, uh, we help those children and their families, but today, uh, I want to briefly mention one of vision that we have while we found this organization. This is called, uh, community, uh, integration. In the past, you could say, uh, during the twenties, uh, thirties or forties or, or those days... integration. In the past, you could say during the 30s or 40s or those days, if a kid is fine as a special need, general solution is put them into institution. Because society doesn't know how to help them. And parents doesn't know how to help them. The best way is to put them away. But now I think this society has developed into a new idea that we want to treat everyone has equal right of living. And has, everyone has dignity to live a normal life, just like you and me. I raised three children. And two of them are wonderfully talented, beautiful, of course, in father's eyes. And my youngest one is autism. So you probably can imagine that my family has gone through quite a journey. We learned, and we came out of it. We made friends. And then we decided to help. And not just us, we have wonderful friends gather together to help them. This idea for community integration is that it is not just individually, one-on-one, helping the special needs children. It involves the neighbors. It involves the blocks, the community, the whole city, the whole community together, including city government, council, other organizations like Rotary Club, we just mentioned, and fire department, police, schools, restaurants, business. Because this is the place that special needs children grew up, and that's where they will, they will live. So to achieve this, we also implement that we educate not just the parents, how to help their own children, but we educate the community. And we also educate the next generation, the youth, high school students, college students. The journey of their life, they are growing up. And in their ideas, they probably have everything. They are deciding what is the destination of their future or life. And we teach them what is special need, what, how to help them, what is the idea of giving our loving hand to those in need. So today, I mentioned this, is what I think is that, what I'm trying to say, actually, is Cupertino is really a wonderful city. You can't find a better city government and council, loving people and loving friends here. And because I personally experienced it. And I wanted to offer this vision, this experience to other community. I think that every community in the Bay Area, as far as they watch ABC Seven, we wanted to help them. We wanted to offer our experience. And we think this is better than just helping individual family or children. If we have the whole community gather together, we have the whole system gather together, and we hold hands, and everyone offer the love, and we can build a community, which is much better, that we all can live together. So.
Mr. Wei, if I could ask, how specifically does this program work?
This program works, complements the school system. Kids go to special education class, and we provide them outside activities, after-school program, social group, play group. And we provide them with enrichment program. We provide them with seasonal sports. Like I have sports team, as I have a basketball team, soccer team, and summer camp, swimming lesson. Oh, I want to mention YMCA. They are wonderful.
Is this, is, people have to pay a fee for this, or?
Certain portion, we, we have to ask parents to also contribute. But in large, it is from the community that at least 75% of our revenue are coming from community, a wonderful people donation business here, and, and people who have deep pocket. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
So I think this is gather all the strength of the whole community, and we can work together, and helping those families and children.
How much does it cost? Varies from child to child, or?
It really depends.
On the situation?
Yeah. Depends on the situation. Because it's such a big spectrum, and that some are more serious, some are more minor. And, you know, early intervention, we all know, that makes a big difference. And I also want to take this opportunity, since you come to Cupertino, you can't blame me for using this as a free marketing opportunity, that we have designed a wonderful, two years ago, we come up with a Cupertino Special Festival. That is, I look around, I see all the festival. None of them are handicap friendly. And I thought, this is, if we can come up with a, with a wonderful carnival style of festival, with, with, with kids on, with sports, you know, with, with music. And, and we invite, actually, last year, we invited the, all the special needs families and children in the Bay Area. And then we invite all the citizens, all the families, come out of the whole community, and come, come and gather together at the beautiful library. And we celebrate together. We celebrate the love. So I also like to invite, you know, all the families around the Bay Area, and hopefully get this idea into other areas. I think this is what your station is going to cover.
Oh, yeah.
And you have a festival?
Yes.
What date?
Coming out of June 10.
And it's here?
It's right here. And the night of June 9, we are thinking about asking help from Rotary Club Interactor and Cupertino's teen commissioner. And those are the wonderful teen leaders to come up with design, a candlelight. And we wanted to express our love to those children and their families. And it's going to be wonderful. It's right outside of this building.
So this on June 10 is going to be special needs kids and?
And everyone.
Well, just, just to give you a little bit of background, I've, I actually worked, when I was in Fresno, I was a Challenger Little League coach. And we, we actually built a beautiful baseball stadium in Visalia. I don't know if you've actually been there?
I haven't been there, but actually, we have one team that's on the Challenger.
Okay.
And I want to, I really want to thank Cupertino City, Parks and Parks, give us a beautiful gentlemen park. We can play there.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, thank you very much for sharing that.
Thank you.
Let's go to Isan Ahmad.
Well, people talk about, you know, the condos, and they talk about tax revenues, and I have no clue what they're talking about. When I moved here, I was little, and I remember my sixth grade birthday party. And what I remember about it is, I remember that, from that day on, I thought Cupertino was like the fun, that everyone wants to be in the place that's so cool. I used to look outside that, we, we live next to the wall, and I used to look outside, and I look it up, and I see trees, and it looks so, it looks neat. And then now, when I look outside, you see this big crane. And it doesn't look good. It looks really bad. And I think if we build these condos and it becomes overcrowded, then, you know, it's not going to be the fun place to be. It's not going to be where everyone wants to go. And people say the schools are overcrowded, and I can say they are. Because in our, in our classrooms, they're always like, the, there's no class under 20 kids. And one of our classes, it's one teacher, 39 kids. And we have, in that class, 20 people will be gone, and we still have 10 left over tomorrow. And, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Connie Zhang.
I was last minute phone call. My husband said that there is a place, if you wanted to be hurt again, you go. And this is my third time standing over here, and feeling like that I actually can say something, where I come from, from China, that, you know, people, little people like me will never have a place to say anything. Last night, right, I was over here, I told the mayor and the city council, saying, you know, this has never happened in China, because whatever the government want to do, that's the way. Whatever the developer want to do, that's just the way, you, you know, you have, you have to deal with it. So however, they voted no. I mean, they voted go with, with the VAALCO condo. And there was a point, the council member, Ms. Sandoval, bring it out, saying, it is not fair, the wall is ridiculous being there, because the kids from the condo have to walk all the way through there. And yesterday, I didn't mention that, because people did a very good, you know, presentation already, saying how bad the safety issue would be, how crowded the school unit will become, because that 137 units. And I was thinking, right after she said that, you know, I would be the first one, even though I live six house down from the wall, I would be the first one to tear down the wall, if anything happens to any kids from those condos walking to the school and hit by a car. You know, we're talking about free country. Why would those kids have to walk all the way through, and going through the traffic, and possibly hit by a car, or whatever happens? So it, the project itself is not, not fair. It's prejudice right there. You put people living in a condition that with 280 highway, such a noise, pollution, right next to supposed to be a big shopping mall. If that shopping mall does happen, will be very crowded, traffic over there. What could happen, you know? It's just overall not a good idea to do that. I know people said we need money, you know, the community service, that's all come from the money. But do we really have to build that 137 unit to get that money? Is there anything else we can do? Why couldn't people work a little harder? You know, I work in medical field, it's not my profession. A lot of people, yes, they said, I'm a professional working in financial field, and this is the only way going to do it. That 137 unit sold out by the owner, will make the money to make the mall working, maybe. They said there is no guarantee, according to Emily Chen yesterday. For something that's not guaranteed is supposed to work, will bring the money into there, and you put 137 units in there, and potentially, you know, endanger the children, I would really concern that. The safety issue, and also the traffic around that corner, for the current resident, for the future resident, all of them. I have nine years old. He's working to school right now. By the time you break down the wall, bring the traffic around the corner, I don't know if I feel, feel safe, you know, letting my kids play outside. Right now, I'm letting him doing that. And I feel lucky, y'all, fortunate, up to this point. And until yesterday, that however, the 200 neighbors there, their voice, it really doesn't count too much, rather than the city needs the money. The whole point is the city needs the money, and that's where the money come from. You guys have to, you know, to sacrifice. Is that what we heard yesterday, loud and clear?
We can hear it.
And, yeah. There was a, some representative saying, well, I asked the 30, 33 people, I think that's what he said, claim, Mr. Richardson, the, the owner's friend. I asked the 30, 30, 43 people, and 37 said yes to the condo. Now, did he actually explain where those, where those VAALCO's projects were leading to, is that 137 condo unit that, you know, the kids will go through such a big, busy traffic to go to their school? I'm sure he didn't. He just said, we're going to rebuild VAALCO Mall to make the whole city, you know?
Right. You know, Connie, it does, it, like we were mentioning, it does sound like an issue that this, this VAALCO condo issue is, is an issue that, that, that we are going to look into, and, and.
Thank you very much for doing that.
We're going to, we're going to see what we can do.
Yeah. Like I said, I was in a conference meeting tonight.
However, we, we cannot vote to overturn it tonight.
Exactly.
Thank you so much. I, I really appreciate.
We don't, we don't have that capability.
I mean it. I, once again, I said, you know, I, that's my third time. I could never imagine this happens in China. There are construction, you know, workers right next to your door, building up. There is no limitations, because they, they do whatever they want. This is a free country. I feel good about it. However, I was disappointed. Apparently, whatever we said, it doesn't count, just because the city needs the money, period.
Connie, thank you very much.
Yeah, Connie.
We're, we're two minutes till 9 o'clock. We promised to get done by 9:00. And we have one more?
There you go.
Last person?
Last person, Rich Madden.
Thank you for giving me this moment. I would like to say, I'd like to tell you about a hero that I've got. This hero's name is Marcia Hubby. She is the person that runs the Cupertino's CERT program, which is Community Emergency Response Training. She has diligently spent hours upon top of hours, helping people in Cupertino realize what the dangers are of not being prepared in case of an earthquake or a disaster. And I myself went through a disaster back in 2003. There was a gas explosion that blew up my home. And I was on your channel.
Yes, sir.
I was interviewed at that time. And the thing that got me through it, that relates to CERT, was that I went through the disaster medical training that taught me that if I stood there and watched my house burn, that I was going to be a crybaby. And so I got my CERT helmet out, I got my vest on, my ID. I went to an officer and said, can I help you direct traffic? That's my house burning down. He says, yes. I didn't have to think about the fire. I was able to help other people to be safely traveling through the area with the emergency vehicles and stuff. So I'd like to have an applause for Marcia Hubby. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, we actually have something called ABC Seven Salutes, where we, where we highlight certain individuals who are making a difference in the community. And it sounds like, just by the applause, that Marcia would in fact be a person that that would be a good to, for us to salute, and let everybody else know about the good things she's doing for this community.
And that, that runs every Friday at 6:00. It's the last thing in the, in the newscast. It's a wonderful time for us to really highlight some of the really extraordinary people in the community. If you haven't had a chance to see it, if you go to abc7news.com, there is an ABC Seven Salutes page. All of the different profiles are on there. They're really remarkable people. Well, I think that's all of our speakers. I really thank you very much for giving us your most precious commodity, which is your time. We really appreciate it. I'm always impressed and really inspired every time we come out to a different community. Cupertino clearly is, is full of very committed, dedicated, and passionate people who care about the community, and really wanted to make it a better place to live. And, and we certainly learned a lot about the city tonight. You certainly have a very active and participatory local government. And we appreciate you having us this evening, and we hope to see you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.